All right, so we've returned from executive session and Francis, I should adjourn the meeting and then we'll convene as a finance committee, is that correct?
Yes, that's all right.
Okay, so the meeting is adjourned and we're now convened as a finance committee.
And we are going to the CIP presentations today, and first up is the Parks Department.
Good morning again, Mayor, City Council Doug Cooper. We're presenting our thought processes as it relates to the capital campaign, or capital plan, excuse me. The funding is in place from the 2007 bond. The bottom portion, the largest portion on this graph is virtually unfunded funds, but we put it in here just so that you know that we are thinking of the future and trying to plan for improving the quality of life and our ability to provide diverse opportunities for our citizens to participate in recreational activities. Park improvements are at 25.5 million, facility improvements 88.6, and then of course walking and paving activities for trails and pathways 11.6. With over 150 parks, we've still got a long ways to go to make them ADA compliant, hence the paving and pathways being such a large number. The park improvements are wrapped up in facilities and we'll get into that to show you that a little bit more into the presentation, but again, it's a planning tool and we want to make sure that we identify opportunities that we think are important going forward. This is a pie chart basically breaking down the $125 million, majority of that is in facility improvements, and again, the majority of that will be into the civic center, basically. The next graph is funding by source. Again, the largest portion of this is unfunded, we haven't identified all of that as it relates to how we're going to accomplish that task, but a lot of opportunities are listed here. We have the improvements that we're doing to the golf courses through their funding sources. One of the smaller projects, but we think is rather important for our ability to offer diverse programming is the enclosed tennis facilities at Will Rogers, which we hope we can get going forward in the near future. Some of the park improvements, oh, skipped a slide, sorry. Unfunded projects, again, the $43 million for the civic center, the utilization study was done on that facility. There's a lot of opportunities in that building that vacant space that could be created into usable space, a fifth floor restaurant or special event space, rooftop garden, which is becoming quite the phase in the downtown facilities. We really are interested in trying to produce some multi-generational recreational centers. I think the city has taken a giant step forward by creating the MAPS senior wellness facilities, and we want to make sure that we continue that trend and start offering some multi-generational facilities here in the future so that we can capture them as young people and get them involved and get them understanding how important, you know, lifelong opportunities in health and wellness can be carried forward into young adults, college, and then upon entering the workforce. And then again, we have those dynamite facilities that are being created for the seniors as well. So I think the game plan is set. We look forward to talking more with the council on those opportunities as we get further into the seasons. Again, some of the park improvements that are underway right now is Woodson Park, we've talked about that with some of the council members in the past. This is going to be a dynamic sports complex. You heard from our convention visitors bureau and what have you that more sports complexes where we can offer regional and national tournaments should be created here in this area so that we can capitalize on the investment that the private sector has already done as it relates to hotels and restaurants and things along those lines. Bring people in from the outside world into Oklahoma City to spend their dollars and have and participate, either their children to participate or even adults to participate in athletic endeavors. This project was a six and a half million dollar project to create all these soccer fields on some real estate that was underutilized. Bluff Creek, again, this is an added advantage on the north side of town up by Lake Hefner. Some of the improvements at Bluff Creek were donated by the private sector, and then of course the GO also has contributed to this to the tune of $350,000. We opened up Kitchen Lake this year as an opportunity, obviously Kitchen has been fished by quite a few people for decades upon decades, even some of the council members when they were children were able to fish this lake, but now we've made it accessible so that all of our residents have an opportunity to get out to this wonderful opportunity. It is one of our close to home fishing areas that we will maintain and stock. It is getting heavily used already, and this project was three quarters of a million dollars. And although that the water trust actually owns the majority of the property, the 10 acres at this parking lot and these improvements are on, we actually bought from the water trust, it's owned by the city of Oklahoma City through the Parks Department. Partnerships is the way to, way of the future, I think the only opportunities that we have to continue to amass the improvements that we have is through corporate partnerships and donor partnerships and nonprofit partnerships. Kerr Park is a perfect example of this with the Sandbridge Energy putting up 4 million of the 6 million plus improvements of this park, virtually completely redoing this park. And again, it gives a dynamic opportunity for their workforce as well as the general public that reside around Kerr Park. Memorial Park, one of the cornerstones of our system, been around for a long, long time. We've revitalized it, we pulled out the old historic plans that we have in storage, looked at the way our forefathers laid out this particular park for the neighborhood that surrounds us. We put some of those elements back into productive life, the major fountain feature on the far west end of the park is the cornerstone, but along with the historic replacements that we have there, we've also put in some cutting edge opportunities, some new ways to handle stormwater management. The parking lot on the north side of the park has bio swales, so any runoff from that parking lot will be put through catchment basements, basins and treated for contaminants. The plants take the heavy metals and the contaminants out of the water supply before it can get on down and even before it can get into the groundwater. So we're excited about this project, and this project was approximately $2.1 million. Then into the facilities, one of the key facilities that we were able to get open and operational this year is our 1920s conservatory at Will Rogers. Actually, this building was completely rebuilt, but it's been completely rebuilt one time before. It was not originally at this location when we acquired it in 1920s, it was moved to this location in 1936. So we've had this asset available, and now it's even a bigger assets, it's already making a name for itself in the birthday party and the wedding reception and circuit across the city. We're really proud of this one, and we think this is going to be one of our most dynamic facilities as it relates to the general parks and recreational opportunities. Early Wine Family Aquatic Center is under review right now. We have hired, in conjunction with the Public Works Department, we have hired a consultant firm to go over every square inch of early wine to make sure that it's still of quality condition, that it will survive another 10, 15 years going forward, as well as looking at opportunities to expand the aquatic elements at this park to make it, again, fresh and inviting. Aquatic facilities are kind of like art museums and amusement parks. If you can't keep it fresh and alive and changing, once in a while, it gets dull, it gets boring. We want to make sure that we have a dynamic opportunity down here. One of the ideas that we are looking at is actually putting in a diving well, because there's really nothing for the older kids that come out to this park to do, so other than the slides, and of course, they get busy. So we're looking at all opportunities as it relates to early wine, and we'll be visiting with our user groups and with some of the council members to get their ideas as we bring that plan together. Some of our other facility improvements are at Shilling's Community Center. Again, trying to make these facilities more dynamic for the neighborhood, adding a gymnasium here. If you add to this, the thunder basketball court that Mr. Pettis just helped us dedicate a few weeks ago, a lot of new stuff going on here, a lot of new kids are coming out to this facility, and we're looking forward to creating some dynamic programs through our recreation division for Shilling's now that it's been expanded and improved. You saw in our graphs that we are also responsible for helping the Golf Commission accomplish their goals and their tasks. Lincoln Clubhouse is one of those. Again, it's coming along quite quickly. Again, cutting edge technology, we are going to heat and cool it with groundwater wells to pump the water through the building to cool it and heat it. It cuts down on energy costs, again, state of the art facility for non-traditional golf. It'll be a perfect place for golf tournaments, be able to have large tournaments out here and accommodate them, but we're looking to create another opportunity for generating revenues in non-traditional golf activities at this clubhouse through, again, wedding receptions, corporate parties, birthday parties and anniversaries and that type of thing. So we're still working through the nuts and bolts of how to offer that, but we're excited about the opportunity to generate a new stream of revenues for the Golf Commission through this one. And of course, paving, again, number one factor is getting pathways and walkways out for our citizens to get out and exercise. You know, if you just change 20 minutes of your life every day by doing something physical, you can be a healthier person, and I know the mayor is a big proponent of us getting out and being healthy, and we want to make sure that we can carry that word out into the neighborhoods by creating walking opportunities across the system. We've got a long ways to go. Another one of the major factors is out at Will Rogers and the Arboretum Trail. We've got a dynamic horticultural manager now that is working with the community foundation to resurrect, again, the importance of the arboretum and the historic nature of the species that have been on display out there since the days of Will Rogers in this town. And of course, along with the paving and walkways, we've got to be cognizant of the ever-changing ADA rules and regulations, want to make sure that all of our citizens can get out and participate in a healthy lifestyle, so we are actively pursuing, again, in conjunction with Public Works to make sure that we have accessible parks and playgrounds for our citizens of all ages. And with that, I want to thank you on behalf of the children, on behalf of the close to home fishing folks, and on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Will you thank us on behalf of the elderly?
I'm sorry?
Will you thank us on behalf of the elderly?
As always, being one of those, I always thank the council for putting up with us old guys.
Lance is pulling up the presentation here, but we've got a lot going on in the MAPS office, and I'm pleased to give you this presentation today. So remember that the MAPS office has essentially three programs going on right now. Of course, we have the MAPS 3 program, and then we have the MAPS for Kids program, and under that MAPS for Kids program, there's the sales tax projects that you probably recognize more as the MAPS for Kids program. Then remember, we have the suburban schools funding, and then the I-89 bond projects that was voted on at the same time, and that's pretty much essentially done, and that's also not in the CIP. And then the I-89 2007 bond issue, which is not in the CIP, but it is something that we are administrating within the MAPS office.
Excuse me, Mr. Todd, what's CIP? I'm sorry?
Capital Improvement Program.
Okay, thank you.
So as far as projects by type in our office, right now, we're, you can see very predominantly MAPS 3 oriented, but still wrapping up the MAPS for Kids projects, $619,676,000.
David, are we doing, I'm sorry. I think the administration building for the I-89 district was part of MAPS 3.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
What is?
MAPS for Kids, yes.
What is our role in that?
Our role is?
They acquired the building.
It's very similar to what we did with the classrooms in that we'll administrate that project, whether it be renovation or what. We did help the district with buying the building, 615 class, and we're still going through that with the district with their change in leadership, there may be some changes in how they manage personnel and go on there, so we're still going through that.
Okay, but we'll oversee the renovation?
We will.
And take that up to completion as well as the?
Yes, ma'am, just like any of the other MAPS for Kids projects.
Great, thank you.
So as far as funding source, it mirrors the type of project since we are funded directly from one program, the others, we have 1% still with the MAPS for Kids right now. MAPS for Kids, remember, is construction, it's technology, and then, as I mentioned, suburban schools within the 23 school districts that are within the city of Oklahoma City. Here's a map of all of the Oklahoma City Public Schools within Oklahoma City. You can see there are quite a few. The MAPS for Kids program renovated or built new 70 different schools. MAPS for Kids completion schedule, prior years, we've completed 56 schools, just last year, 10 schools, and we, in this fiscal year, we should be able to finish the last four of those schools for a total of 70 schools. Some quick pictures from 2012, a project that was completed, Oak Ridge Elementary, you can see on the upper left is your before picture of a typical classroom, and then down on the right is the renovated space. And also here, Fillmore Elementary, the upper left is a before picture, and the windows and that soffit there were just caked with lead-based paint and things like that, and we replaced the windows and replaced the soffit and got rid of all that lead-based paint. Class N SAS was completed in 2013. This is a picture of the gymnasium, you can see the gymnasium in the upper left, why not terrible, but you can see there's a tarp down there at the, at the end of the court because the roof was leaking and they were trying to protect the floor. And then at the right side, you can see the renovated space, much better lit, new floor, paint, lots of amenities in there. Northeast Academy is one that was just completed, and the left picture, again, is a before picture of the typical classroom, and then the right picture is the renovated space. That floor is the same floor, it was just refinished. I marvel every time I see that picture, how that floor turned out. Suburban school projects, school construction renovations, you know, it's based on an application process, each of the schools sends in an application, and they have guidelines as to what they can be used for, like computers, software technology, buses, vehicles, see the whole list there. And then that goes through the trust. Currently, there's a little more than $4 million left in the suburban schools, they have till 2017 to complete that, I'm sorry, they have till 2017 to get an application to us, then they have three years to complete those projects.
Quick question, is that $4 million broken down to each school district?
It was, it was spread proportionally as to how many students were in that district, and a lot?
Oklahoma City resident students in the district.
Right, right, within Oklahoma City. So most of the school districts have their, they're spent down to zero or near zero. The majority of this money, I believe right now, is at Putnam City in their account, and there's a couple of other schools, I think maybe Middel might have a little bit, but Putnam City got the bulk of the money because of their students. And here's a map of those suburban schools, you can see that it extends from Luther to Banner all the way up to Little Lax and out to Piedmont. It's quite expansive as far as all the districts that are within the city limits. MAPS for Kids expenditures, coming up, we have $5 million approximately left over from the program, and then we have the suburban $4.2 million, so we'll have a total of 9.2 in spending. Let's move on to MAPS 3, just a quick update on each of the projects. The master plan, this body approved several months ago, and we're well into the design of the final plans on this. The property is about 95% complete on the Upper Park, we still have one little ramp area from the ODOT properties, but property in the Upper Park is complete except for that, the Lower Park has begun, and we have some properties in that. We're doing utility plans right now. Salvation Army has just recently moved out of their building, so we'll be sending you demo plans here pretty soon. So the park is moving well. Sidewalks, we just, today on the agenda, there was two projects that were for completion of projects, there was a north project and a south project, and these were projects one and two of Phase 1 that are complete. We currently have Project 3 of Phase 1 and Project 1 of Phase 2 under construction right now. We have additional projects within Phase 2 in design that'll be out soon, and we have Phase 3 in design right now. Trails, we have one trail project that is under construction right now, and that's the one on this map that's designated as number one, the little one balloon there. This map comes from the Trail's master plan, but are the ones that were designated as MAPS Trails. So Trail number one, the River Trail, is under construction, should be complete sometime this next spring. And Trail 2, if you recall, you approved the alignment study on that, and today there were three contracts on there to approve engineering. So engineering has begun on the I-44 Trail, which is shown as Trail number 2. Streetcar, as you know, we have an alignment chosen, a preferred alignment, and right now, there's an RFP on the street to select streetcars, and that RFP is due, I believe, November 13th is when we will receive proposals back for the streetcar. So that'll be the first piece of the streetcar that we will see, basically under construction, even though it's not actual construction, but it's purchased and it gets us going on that. Convention Center, you'll see a conceptual report here in the next couple of weeks that has come through the subcommittee and up through the advisory board, but right now, just show you the property that is under purchase right now. Senior Wellness, remember that we had a lot of discussion about a year ago, year and a half ago, about senior wellness, and finally got all that in the right direction. I'm very happy to tell you that we've got two projects that are going really well. We've got the one up north with Healthy Living Inc. that is through preliminary report, and they're doing final plans on it. You know, everything that I've seen, it's turning out really well, the operator is happy, the architect is working with them really well. The second Wellness Center is with North Care, and it's down by Capitol Hill High School. It's going well also, they're working through the same procedure and process, just a little behind on that one, we're about two months behind on that one, just from sheer schedule, that we've been working with the school district on that property down there, and I think that one is turning out equally as well. State Fairgrounds, this project just broke ground. If you recall, we awarded the contract to Atlas Construction, it's for the new expo building that will go, you can see it go there at the fair, you can see it superimposed over the existing travel and transportation building. I like to show this picture just so everybody remembers just how large this building's going to be, it's about two and a half times the size of the existing building out there. So there'll be groundbreaking on that, I believe 20th, I believe, you'll all get invitations, it's testing my memory, but groundbreaking coming up on that, so that is under construction. And the parking lots that were built to support this are all complete. Oklahoma River, we've done a lot down at the river, if you recall, the lighting that was used this weekend has been completed, what we call Phase 2 was used a lot. Phase 2 included those judging platforms that you, if you go out there, you can see them at the finish line and at the 100, or at the 200, 500, 1,000, 1,500 meter, down various points on the river, and they're the little cones that stick up. Each of those platforms has a camera in them, HD camera, and those were used this last, weekend before last during the canoeing, that the boathouse district was using those to show up on the screens that we had there, and it was picked up by a group out of Spain, and they actually did a broadcast in Europe on this canoe championships from here in Oklahoma City. So Phase 2 has put a lot of that equipment, a lot of that infrastructure in there, and then Phase 3 is the whitewater facility that is under construction right now. If you've been by there, you've seen that they've done a lot of the clearing, and you'll soon see dirt being brought in there to build that facility. So expenditures by fiscal year, you can see those spelled out, these are basically right in line with the implementation plan that we operate from. And then a total summary, as I mentioned, we have the three different programs going on, but we have the OC MAPS, MAPS for Kids with the $5 million, and the suburban schools, we still have 4.2 for applications, and then MAPS 3, 610 and a half million, for a total of $619.7 million. And then by fiscal year, again, 619.7. So that's it for the MAPS office, very busy. I can answer any questions you might have.
And the last presentation is Marcia Slaughter with Water and Wastewater Utilities.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Marcia is cognizant of the time, and so she's going to go a little bit fast.
I am. So I'm going to tell you about the water wastewater, and in one slide, the solid waste capital improvement program. This map shows you generally just as background information where the water and where the water utility is in the city, the big blue lines are the pipes. I want to talk about two things, I want to talk about some improvements for system resilience too, that is making the system more reliable, and about water supply investments that are in this program. This map shows you where we have completed most of our Southwest Water improvements, and where we'll be making some others during this five-year program. The project, the water capital improvement program is mostly construction of a second pipeline to Lake Atoka. We're building about eight miles of pipes in neighborhoods every year. We're making improvements to all the water treatment plants, including the last round of reliability improvements to the overhaul for plant. We're also building all of the other features that go along with the system, pumps, more pumps and more treated water storage to make service more reliable. We're building additional transmission mains, again, to deliver more water to growing parts of the community, but particularly, we're building a project shown in this map in green, and in more detail on this map, that will help tie the Draper and Hefner water treatment plants together so that, once a resiliency plan, when these facilities are completed, and it will take us almost 10 years, we will be able to serve the entire city from either plant. Now, not at peak demand capacity, because we still need both plants to do. Now, not at peak demand capacity because we still need both plants to do that, but at a level that will be adequate for basic daily functions while whatever the problem is, is repaired. The other really exciting thing, beginning in the water utilities, in this capital program, we'll begin construction of the second Etoka Pipeline. We begin with continuing engineering work on design for design, completing environmental studies that are always a part of this type of project, repairing the surge protection system on the existing pipeline and then developing additional plans for how to bring this artist-like supply in. We need the pipeline to backstop the 50-year-old pipeline that's served us very well for a long time. We need more capacity, both to bring our existing water rights to Oklahoma City, but also to implement use of the Sardis water supply, which will occur in 15 to 20 years' time. The Water Capital Improvement Program, larger than it's ever been, we're very excited about the opportunities it presents. Wastewater, the wastewater system, again, where we are is shown in the map by the squiggly lines that are the gravity mains of the wastewater system. The system operates in five different watersheds in our community. Project I want to highlight for you is treated wastewater reuse. This map shows you where we have completed projects in green are projects that are completed or in construction. In red are projects coming, starting by 2019, and in green, in black, projects that are starting by 2017. Wastewater program is very much split into all the areas that we spend, that require attention in the system. Reuse, live stations, large use, all the pieces and parts of the system. And sewer rehabilitation, we replace lines where necessary, but we also use a variety of techniques that make those lines more reliable without having to dig up and install new pipe. Of interest in this CIP, we've been working across the basins and across the sewer sheds from east to west in South Oklahoma City. And our next basin will be generally, will generally pick up the Stockyards area. We're excited about that, about learning more about that area in general in the city. Very interesting. We are increasing, again, showing you the map, this map outlines places where we're increasing capacity in the sewer system for existing and new customers. Like other plant, again, balanced plant pumps, the same kinds of improvements you see in the water system. I wanted to touch on our plan for treated wastewater reuse. Our Deer Creek Water, wastewater treatment plant produces extremely high-quality water. The water from that plant is a secondary source of supply for cities north of the plant that are in the Cimarron watershed. We're very excited to have the opportunity to reuse some of that wastewater in Lake Hefner. This would be called an indirect potable reuse. Again, the water quality is extremely high quality, normally better than the North Canadian River quality. Our North Canadian supply has been less reliable in the last few years as we've gone through droughts than it had been in the past. We see this as a way to backstop the supply so that we'll be able to manage construction of the additional water supply improvements along with the conservation program that's already underway, to again, make certain we can make progress logically without having to be concerned about a shortage of supply in the North Canadian. I envision that this might be a maximum of about 10% of the water that flows into Lake Hefner, to give you an idea. We need to complete a lot of good science, testing both water supplies for a variety of treatability and chemical constituents that are, of course, important to our customers and, of course, to the city council. So we have a lot of homework to do before this could begin construction, which is generally scheduled potentially for first construction in about 2017 as well. So total program, $1 billion for the first time. OC at $22.7 million will be buying trucks, doing a little more to upgrade their fleet maintenance so that they can add more CNG fuel vehicles and buying about $5.5 million of big blue carts over the next five years. Happy to answer questions.
Lot of ambitious projects going on there.
We're up for it.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all for today.
All right, ready to adjourn the Finance Committee? Any comments from council? All right, we're adjourned.